There's some issues with the landowner to the north to with this. They want, I think, I don't know for sure what it is, but it has something to do with the driveway.
Yeah, you've got to sign that from their lawyer, make it illegal that you can permanently use the driveway. They're not forced, they're going to put in a new driveway or anything else.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Yes, we have pro-cop here from Ragged Eight for getting a certificate of property. And I think this gentleman is representing them. And they want to waive, they want to obtain the certificate that we had back in 1971, and then waive all back penalties. It would be $408.83 altogether.
Okay.
She just called me about that one day this week, I went and talked with her. And I think that's traditionally what we've been doing, is we've been having to pay the back taxes and waiving, waive the penalties. I think that'd be appropriate, give it back on tax rolls if we used it or somebody. I think it just protocolled what we've done in the past. Any comments from the elevator?
No, I was just representing them.
Yeah, what's, I mean, you can tell us what they're going to property, do with the property?
What's that?
What's the elevator's going to do with the property, it's just?
Just maintain it, they just didn't want it to be jugged up.
Yeah. Is there any, are there no buildings on it or anything?
I don't believe so.
No. It's between our shit and the building.
Okay. It says vacant lands and...
Yeah.
So this is on the north side of the trail, Ron?
Yeah, it's south of, well, Gary and Abe own that building.
That's, I wasn't interested in that.
Just marked it between that and give them the money.
So it was 408 West 10?
It's going to be, for money amounts, it'll be $408.83 is what pro-co-op will pay.
I noticed on the bill too, there's interest, what?
They were going to waive the interest because that's what they've done in the past. So that'll be a decision up to the board if they do that for them this time.
And then there's also drainage interest that we have.
Yeah, it's the taxes and the drainage.
The drainage, you're doing that four and eight dollars, is it not?
Is the drainage doing that?
That is all included, yep. Yep, Janet has written here in her notes, her notes, 8283 for drainage, 310 for delinquent taxes, and current taxes are $6.
Wish mine were six. I wish my taxes were six.
You would too.
I'm trying to go back, have we waived drainage interest before?
Not until...
No, I think that's something...
Anything with drainage, we don't, we don't tax, but...
The drainage interest at 23142?
Yeah. I don't think we should waive that, in my opinion.
If somebody else has to pay that.
Yes, yeah.
That's the drainage district, it's part of the drainage district?
Evidently.
I'd be in favor of just waiving all the penalties and interest except that for the drainage and go ahead and sign the...
Okay, so I have a motion to waive the interest from the taxes, but not on the drainage? So the total would be a little different on that?
Yep, we'll add that drainage to it, but...
Okay.
I'll second Carl's motion.
We got a first and a second, any more discussion, Larry?
So basically it's the tax minus penalties plus the drainage interest.
If we didn't do it that way, we'd be assessing some farmer in the interest and that wouldn't be fair for them.
It would go back, yeah, it'd get spread across the other...
Drainage, yeah.
So I think that's fair, we're doing it to not waive the interest on that.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, she's nice though. Okay, we're going to move on down to, oh, is it 45, yeah, not quite. Okay, let's go down to the bottom here and we can do some transfers.
See, we didn't spend near this money when you were going.
I should just move on around the table.
I liked those numbers and I said, I'm glad that was...
Okay, approved transfer from General Basic Fund to Secondary Road Fund of the amount of $106,051.
We haven't transferred any money this year from General Basic to Secondary Road yet. And this is what our budget had allotted for it. So it's getting close to the end of the year, it's time to look at some of these things.
So we need a motion on each?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to transfer that, 10651.
Okay, any more discussion? Got a sec from Carl, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved. Approved transfer from Rural Services Funds to Secondary Road Fund in the amount of $1,195,532.
This is a little larger, and it's the Rural Services portion of the transfer to Secondary Road. And we haven't done that part this year either.
Is this about status quo? I mean, is this about the way it's...
Normally we would do a transfer about mid-year and then again at the end of the year. But I guess I never even thought about it until looked at in June or into May and went, oh, we need to get that money transferred.
But I mean, it is, I know that there is money transferred like this, and it's almost nothing out of the ordinary.
No, no, that's just, you know, we collect the money, we give it to Secondary Roads to pay their bills.
Probably so perhaps, there's one set for each one of you guys to take something through that.
I know, we did have some discussion about a mile given to them or where they build up the reserves. Do you take a look at that to see if, you know?
Usually every month I'll take a look.
Transfer what we need to, but not necessarily anymore, because they have a huge pile of money sitting there.
Right, and Paul has a transfer since towards some Secondary Road loss fund. And he has a reason he's going to use that, I don't blame that.
Mr. Chairman, I move you transfer the Rural Services Fund to Transsecary Road Fund, $1,195,532.
First, second by Dave, any more discussion?
And we are required to transfer three and three-quarter cents of the Rural Services Fund, or a combination of that and General Basic, to Secondary Road every year. Otherwise they don't get the road use tax money. So it doesn't mean you have to pay a hundred percent, but you have to pay at least that much, so...
And I think, like what you're concerned, Eric, is the buildup of funds there. But when we do a major paving project like we're going to do next year at $225,000 a mile, that drains that down rapidly.
Right.
So we kind of got to pile up the money to pay the bill, because you can't bring a company in to come in to pay just a couple miles at a time.
Right, so it's all worked out. But I know a while back we had some discussion about a lot of money being transferred and not used. So, you know, it's all kind of working the way it's supposed to.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved transfer from Secondary Roads Loss?
If you want to save that one till Paul comes, because he's got that one there.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, how about, we go down here to the approve a transfer from LEC Equipment Capital Project Fund to the Debt Service Fund in the amount of $17,543.35.
Okay, as of June 1st, we're required to pay our principal and interest, not only on the equipment, but on the building, so I have two separate transfers. The first one is on the equipment. This takes the money out of the, at least the equipment fund that we had set up for it, puts it in the Debt Service Fund where it needs to be paid out of. So, and the check has already been issued to Bank Iowa because we had to pay that on June 1st.
You know, the...
Let's just move through to Bank Iowa.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to transfer $17,543.35 to Debt Services Fund.
I have a first, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Eric, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approved transfer from General Basic Fund to Debt Service Fund in the amount of $58,420.
And the building portion of the transfer, we're not allowed to tax for that other than under our General Basic Fund. So we can't levy under Debt Service for it. So we have to move it from General Basic to Debt Service to pay that portion of the, and again, there's copies for the press.
And who's that going through again?
This is also Bank Iowa.
So Bank Iowa also?
They default.
I make a motion to transfer the General Basic to Debt Service for $58,420.
First at...
Second by Dave, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Who was the second on the last motion, I'm sorry?
Dave.
But I had him as the first, so I'm glad.
I think you seconded the one before.
Exactly.
Sorry about that.
This is a nightmare that you have to do legally to keep the books going.
I'm glad you have all these little rules.
Shuffling, shuffling to the right checkbook.
Back and forth and that sort of...
Approved hire of John Ulrich as a part-time dispatcher, rate of $14.37 per hour, retroactive to 516 of 17. We had our LEC meeting this morning and we discussed this hire and he looks like a very good candidate.
Positive responses.
Yep. He's already got a lot of experience behind him, he's been doing well, so...
Why move a hire of John Ulrich as the rate of $14.37, retroactive 516 of 17?
I have a first, second, second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have one other transfer from Community Betterment Loss Fund.
Did I jump over one?
Right after Paul's, Community Betterment Loss Fund.
Okay. All right, approved transfer for Community Betterment Loss Fund to General Basic Fund in the amount of $2,500 and to the Rural Services Fund in the amount of $80,054.
When we budgeted for this current year that we are in, the board had allocated $2,500 to be paid to the Gilmore City Daycare, the one-time allocation. And then for money to be paid from Rural Services to the library, to fund part of the library fund. Rural Services tends to be a real tight fund, there's not a whole lot of extra in there because everything gets paid out to those items that are, there just isn't leftover. And so we've got to transfer money into there to make sure that they have enough to fund some of that, so...
And the library amount is distributed around the county, to different libraries.
And we've already paid the libraries their allocations, except this last one of ours here in June. But this money replaces what we have spent out already.
I move to approve that the transfer of Community Betterment Loss to General Basic is not $2,500.
And then...
And the $80,000.
...of $80,054.
Yeah, that's right. First from Carl.
I second that.
Second by Dave, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All righty, all righty, eight forty-five or after. We have a public hearing on the Humboldt County Budget Amendment for fiscal year 1617. Chairman, I move you open public hearing. Okay, a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is open. Any comment from the public?
Usually the time when we have to rectify the books at the end of the year.
It is.
Juggle the numbers around until they fit the category. Any more than anything?
This time when I went through, we changed fiscal health and education, oh, I got copies here for the press on that one too. Fiscal health and education, which is on line 19, changed that by $31,500 because of some grants back to public health. Because you remember, public health, the money comes in us and we turn around and give it right back to them. It's a paper trail that the auditors wanted us to do. So we need to increase that more money than what we counted on. Line 21, we increased county environment and education because of a contribution from zoning towards the EMA vehicle. And then FICA and IFRS increases. When we set up safety HIPAA and hazardous waste, we didn't put a lot in there for salary or FICA and IFRS or any of that, because we weren't sure how much time Melody would be sending. And so now we need to put some money in there to finish out the rest of the year. Under roads and transportation, we increased that by 1,000, and that was for the co-city bus allocation. There's one more payment to be made and there just isn't enough in that budget to pay it, so we better increase that. Government services to residents is line 23, we increased that to reflect extra costs for special elections. We had a couple of special elections last year, schools, that we weren't counting on. So that money does come back to us, but then your budget, you have to show them your budget that you've got money to pay. You shouldn't have a minus in your budget, so increase that by 4,400. Line 24 administration, we're increasing that to reflect COBRA payments for employees. The employees pay that money into us and then we pay it out. But again, it was showing a negative in that budget amount because we didn't, we don't budget to pay it. And next year I did put some in there, so we covered a little bit anyway. And then under capital projects, we put 1,000 in there for, and that's line 27, for the LEC building remodel cost. And that's for that transfer, part of that transfer, we need just a little more. So I added some revenues this time, I increased on line 8 our internal governmental revenues, on line 10 our charges for services, and line 11 I used some money on properties. And so the revenues offset what we would increase in expenses. So we're actually, bottom line, on line 40, we're increasing our fund balance by about $90,500. So we try to capture, I don't always, when we do a amendment through the year, pull the revenues forward, because I'm never sure if you're going to get all of your revenues or not. At this time of the year, you can tell where you have more revenues than what you had anticipated, so that's why I decided to include them. So we're in good shape, it won't make any additional tax money, it'll just come from what's there.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed, I need a motion to adopt the Resolution 2017-8.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2017-8.
Second by Dave, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Okay.
You heard any?
I don't know. All right. Okay, we got a little more time, I guess we can drop down and do some committee reports.
I'm going to go back about two weeks. On the 23rd, five o'clock, I went over to Spencer for the Edno, I guess it's their yearly meeting. They have a big dinner and show all the people, the volunteers and whatnot through Edno, so... They had one of their little mishaps where the caterer forgot they was catering and didn't bring the food. So it's seven o'clock, we're kind of looking around wondering, but we finally got fed, so we all lived through it. Last week, I think the only thing I had was Thursday night, was my CFR meeting in Webster City. All moving toward there.
Hey Rick, in regard to that Edno food pantry, you're on top of that a lot, monthly, weekly. We had the Edno gal talk to us at Rhodey last week. And she said, the only reason we didn't have it, we couldn't get volunteers. Then I played with the guy in golf, lined up the volunteers, he said, we got all kinds of volunteers. There's a conflict there, I don't know. If one group says we can't get the food, the other people say we can't get the labor. Maybe you can find out which is the truth.
For the most?
Yeah, for the most.
Well, the, right now, the state has told us that they don't have the food to give us on a month-to-month basis, so...
That's what.
We're still on the every other until they...
That's what I thought. And the gal...
That's what we were told.
And she told us at Rhodey, the reason we didn't have the food, we couldn't get labor to pass it out.
No, I think...
Maybe that's other communities.
Labor, all kinds of...
That's what I thought too.
We've had all kinds of help every time we've done that, so...
People, volunteering, whatever. Okay, on the 23rd, I had daycare meeting. Well, first of all, we had that pre-bid meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning out at County Shed. We had daycare meeting on the afternoon at 1 o'clock. Just status quo, we're still trying to get some funding. We're going to have a kickoff here, try to get some more money someday. We've got enough money to build it, we're just working on ways to pay it back now. And then the 24th, I went to Emmett County, the 22 county regional health thing. I think they're probably having some growing pains, it's doing good work, doing a lot of good services. The debate is still whether you regionalize this stuff as far as centralizing budget, centralizing services, or whether you keep it county level. There's a big conflict going on, some like it, some don't like it. And we've had workstations, we have pro-con stations, so someday we'll get it worked out. It was put up once, but legislature, we got to figure out somebody to get it to work for them. That was the extent of my meetings.
Tuesday, 23rd, I was at the Balfour-Calvert recon meeting. Wednesday, I had a Region 5 hazmat meeting, very interesting. And also on Wednesday, the 24th, I had a Midas meeting, they're still working on the bus barn for Humboldt. Thursday, the 25th, we put the flags up at the courthouse. Let's see, Tuesday, the 30th, we took the flags down. Want to thank everybody for their participation and help on that. Also on the 30th, I had a VA meeting. Wednesday, the 31st, I rode with Paul and we went out in Norway, looked at a building that's been in the ditch, come to find out it's been there since 16th of July of last year, still in the roadway ditch.
Building in the ditch.
It blew off of the property across the road.
Oh, they just not claimed it?
Like they dumped it out of the field and just shoved it over into the ditch, it's still there. While we were driving, we found a fence line that had been ripped out in the middle of the section and wound up stuck in a ditch for about 100 and some feet, right out in the old ditch down the road. They've got another section of fence really out there, Paul's checking into that. Then on, yesterday, I met with the hills on the dirt pile up at Hardy, talked with him on that, that's on the board. All I had.
On the bus barn from Midas, is that something they...
They're trying to get a bus barn up here in Humboldt County.
It's going to happen this year, do you think it's going to be?
It's going to happen, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, good.
I have all committee reports, and left, this morning we did have an LEC meeting, so I will, we did that. Other than that, none.
Okay, I go way back to the week of the 15th, at Lancel on the 16th, down in Fort Dodge. And that was all I had, because I left shortly after that for two weeks.
They get, forgot I was on, in on the flag, the 30th. We had the poor ladies that were pulling the flags, we had so many people helping take the poles down and handing the flags to them, we about ran them to death, but we finally got them caught up and everything put away.
We'd had the amount of people we had taken them down, if we had to foot them up, there was only four of us footing them up. Took a couple hours. It was, what, 40 minutes to get them down?
Which reminds me, you had called about the broken glass up there and I didn't get to get back to you. It's not all the way through, it's only through the first pane of glass, so there's no way for anything to get inside. We do have a call in to Pella and Fort Dodge, because they're Pella Windows, to have them come and take care of that and the other one that's broken and whose grate has been had ripped. They should be here, they say, said they were busy because of all that.
I'm sure they are.
But they will get there.
Okay, well, we have nine o'clock, looks like we could go into drainage.
I'll make a motion to go into drainage.
Second.
A first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are in drainage.
All right, I will get first place. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
I have a few little odds and ends for you too, after Paul when he's back.
We'll get you back in here.
So, were you nearing to the stuff that was going on over there, or...
Well, yeah, I was on that London Bridge about six days before this incident happened.
Wow.
Didn't go to the concert, did you?
No, no, didn't go to that one, that's good. No, no, didn't go to that one, that's good.
Yes.
Kind of in between it, but then the first one there, when they went and tried to get into Parliament, and then, uh, this last one.
Want coffee?
Yeah, you know, take a little shot, yeah, just put it in the regular cup.
Well, we enjoyed following you on your tour.
Oh, did you? My wife was putting stuff on there.
Oh, yeah. Looked like you were getting plenty of walking, you had your...
Oh, man, we walked and walked and walked. Well, my daughter, she was kind of in charge, she's twenty-five. She don't mind walking, you know, she'd rather walk a mile than pay a two-dollar fare. I think one day we walked fourteen miles, plus climbed the two floors of the Eiffel Tower.
Good morning, Rick.
Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Why don't you drink that, all this stuff? I think you're going to talk to the outside, I thought you did.
Rick, can you shut down the TV again?
Yes, yes, sir. This is your nine o'clock item on the agenda. It's annexation report for the project out by Tricia's dad's property. It gets land brought in that will be paying towards that ag closure project. So one closing two ag wells that Mansky's involved in. We have to get this step taken care of, um, to get the right people paying. That's what this is about. Very short report. One page, basically. We have the appraisal report, or the annexation report done for the other one, too, that's going to close the two ag wells just to the east of the site. That's ready to, but it hasn't been submitted, or it hasn't, it's not on the schedule yet, so... Both of these should be moving forward. Total, about a hundred and sixty acres, roughly? Yes. Is there any objections to the annexation of this?
No.
Have we heard any written or something?
Concern, because this is annexation, and annexation is done on a fairly regular basis.
Yes, yes. The good part of this one, everybody, all the landowners are pretty well informed of what's happening, what the costs are going to be, um, yeah, they've been involved from the beginning on this one. I think that's why you don't hear any objections.
The concern, and I think it's a good time to bring it up, is that we'll talk about it at some point, is anytime you annex into a drainage district, there's a concern from the people in that drainage district that they just get put in there, they pay nothing for what, you know, they've been paying, you know, from years and years back, and yet say, "Well, here they are, they get annexed in and, uh, nothing happens." So, this, this may or may not be the example, but, I mean, there is concern about that. This is annexation, and there's no, uh, one here, I don't think, to complain about that or concern about that, but that is something that, that we hear, we've all heard it, Rick's heard it, I've heard it, that, okay, you're annexing people into our drainage district, and here they are, you know, we've paid how much money for improvements, maintenance, so on and so forth.
Originally being built and all that, so...
Yeah, so, that, I'm just bringing that up. As a concern.
I agree with him, and I mean, DD two's been a real pain in the shorts here for some time, and a lot of money put in. And now these people are just going to come in, uh, cost me thousands and thousands of dollars, and, uh, now these people get in and charge.
We've had, we've had a discussion with our drainage attorney about that.
I heard it.
And, uh, he told me there's no past precedence of that.
I realize that.
Yeah, so, I've had that conversation, because I understand the concern. And the thing with this one is, these, these people were using ag drainage wells for their outlet. They weren't using two, so... They, they paid for the ag well put in at that time. Yeah, yeah, so, there are cases like you're talking about, though.
And I understand this particularly, because this is, this particular one is ag drainage well closure, that, yes, they had their own drainage, but I just wanted to bring this up, I don't want to belabor the point with this annexation, but, there's other ones that may not include ag drainage wells, that there is a concern. Oh, we looked at this, and, yep, they're in here now, but, you know...
And I think that might be handled differently.
We may have to take a look at that. Like I said, this one, and there may be, you know, obviously, this is a public hearing, so this would be the type of place for people to voice their concerns, but, you know, that is something that's out there. And understandable that...
DD two was one that closed drainage wells, and it cost two bucks.
Right.
And didn't do, I didn't, that's any good, didn't get, uh...
Yeah, then there's people on the flip side of it that...
That was just on the latter of the, that improvement.
For...
The ag well closure.
Oh, yes.
Wasn't on the open ditch itself.
Right, it was the tile.
And that's what, if they were to pay, it would only be on...
This is referring to the open ditch, you... Right, right.
This...
Yeah, this, but, yes.
I want to, I mean, I don't want to get off the subject, other than to bring up that fact, and that is not going to go away, and there's concern out there.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, that is a public concern.
This is to deal with annexing in terms of the drainage question.
Because we keep adding acres and acres and acres into this drainage district, are we going to overload this at some time?
Yeah, I can understand your concern.
I already see down in, like, Corn township where it goes into the natural creek, I mean, in a big rain, it's already backing up into those people's land. It's at the bottom of the bridges, I mean, how many more acres can we add to this district?
The, this is a small enough area to, the effect on the ditch. We've gone through this calculation before, not on this particular one, but on others. And when it's this kind of tile adding to a ditch, it, I remember the one we did years ago and it was added a quarter inch of depth, uh, but, not, this, his point is well taken.
The drip, drip, drip adds up to a lot.
There you go, exactly, well put, that's what I was getting to.
You know, you take a two-thirds full glass of water, and you just add all them acres up by Gilmore, and now you're going to add this many more, pretty soon that glass is going to overflow.
Yeah.
Well, the good thing about it, you've got more people to help pay for a future drainage maintenance.
Positive part of it, yeah.
They're maintaining their fair share from here forward.
But it's still the, the same thing that, at what point you stretch it so far that you're causing damage to the other side?
Right.
And I understand where you're at.
So what's the alternative to it?
Yeah, they have, they have no other...
Well, we don't have a whole lot.
Wetlands.
Just tile.
Right, for ninety degrees, a lot of humidity.
What's the alternative to us people that own a farm by the river? I mean, any place that there's been in the river, the river's cutting right through that land. I can take it down and show it to you.
Oh, yeah.
We can see it down towards town.
Yeah.
How much has come down the...
You know, we used to have what they call a hundred-year floods and five-hundred-year floods. Now we have a hundred-year flood every year. And it's all caused by all this extra drainage that's been added.
Gets to the outlet faster than it used to.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, needs a motion to accept the annexation report?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
I accept the motion. All, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now, what else we do?
That's the issue. That's the whole issue, yeah, no.
Shut up.
And it'd be... Yep, this, this actually, this is the actual hearing for this one. I got another one that you will be setting, two more, actually.
I've got a question for Rick Hopper, when you have time.
No, we actually got a few minutes.
Okay. Has the engineering study been completed on lateral to, like, for me?
For yours?
Yeah.
No, um, we got, we're trying to get through the step, but we'll have that probably within a week or so. I mean, all we're basically doing is verifying the, the sizing that Mansky put together, so...
Do they, in this study, do they check for limestone, do, you know, or...
Well, we will at least use the, the maps, um, to verify depth. I know, like, up close to yours, here, the property just east of yours, it's pretty close to the surface, I understand. So, um, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that was always a concern, too.
Is that why it worked, what was happening to it?
Yeah. Is it being limestone? Oh, mine.
So you'll just use a map to determine that?
Well, we'll verify with the map, it's been pretty accurate. We may need to do that all, I don't know if we could do it like in the road ditch up there? Do you know if there's utilities in your road ditch, one on the south side of the property?
Uh, I can't answer that, I don't believe so.
Okay, well, we do it one call.
Yeah, that'd be the safest.
Yeah, then we wouldn't have to doubt in the field. I think we should arrange that.
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
Yeah, before we take it any further. I believe we're okay from what we saw out there, but, yeah. That's right, you don't know. I'll make a note that we followed through with that. Uh, we got a few more minutes before we can have our next one. Is there anything else we need to discuss, Rick? Um, let's see. Not on the... Oh, I stopped by to look at the seeding up on one twenty-five, it looks like it's come pretty well. There's one spot that's burned real bad, I don't know if something got spilled or if it was sprayed, but it was...
Drip?
Uh, yeah, I don't know, um, and I'm not sure it's where they seeded, actually, it's right next to the road ditch. Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure what happened. The actual seeding part that was done, I don't think was affected.
The beans were on one twenty-five, um, my phone's been fairly hot on. Mr. Dickey is not overly happy about his pond, and we haven't done anything with that, so where are we at with the pond?
He requested a change of location, and that brought in a little more drainage area, so we had to increase one of the pipes from a thirty to a thirty-six inch. Denver has headed now, I don't remember what day it was, I think I might have said something in a message.
Yep, you said last Friday when we talked, that they were going to have...
Yeah, and the adjusted quantities, so... I texted him Friday, I haven't heard back from him. I was hoping to get an update from him to present to you today. I will text him or call him this morning yet again, and see if I can get some kind of feedback. Maybe I can get you a reply before you guys are done.
Well, we were out there in April of last year, April fourth, the day we were out there, drapes around, so... I guess I'm, and I know he moved the location, and we had back and forth, but we... She can't do anything more with that district, and we aren't able to finish our end until we get that end done.
Okay, here's, I'm on the agenda for next Monday to present the reclassification for one twenty-five. A meeting with the commissioners, we've met already, we came up with adjustment factors, we're making the adjustments, we're meeting Thursday to finalize that. That will basically get the reclass in effect unless there's court action regarding it. You, we will have a price, whether the work is done completely or not, you could bill. Based on the estimate. Based on the estimate. That'd probably be the thing to do. Yeah, I'm thinking so.
Well, Mark's theory is, or when we talked, was, you know, this has gone on three years since they started the project, and he's, and he understood he moved some things, so... But, you know, it's getting to the point where he's just really concerned whether it's even going to go on, and he sure doesn't want it stretching into the fourth year.
Right.
And we still haven't leveled anything, and, so we got to get to the point where we can start billing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because we got farmers that are sitting out there in limbo, so...
Yes, um...
The last time we, you gave an update on that, you says, "We're, we're so close, but we, we're still, we haven't moved," so...
We have the plan in Denver's hands. It's just a matter of them coordinating thing with their, with their sub, their dir guy, and getting us a price. The reclass will be taken care of, so that it could be billed. Yeah, I think we just keep tabs on the timing.
Well, I hope it gets done before the summer gets away from us. We're all scratching our heads saying, "How?"
We're actually coming on the best time of year to build it, because of the flows. July flows should be down, I know we're in a crazy weather pattern, but, um, should be a good time to get it built.
Okay.
And I will call him, I'll get you some kind of response before you leave today, and I'll get your response as soon as we get that back in our hands.
And this is all discussion relationship to the pond, of this rapid now.
Yeah, agree.
But the pond also has a huge deal with one twenty-five, and Trish can't finish up any much more of hers until...
Right, until it gets completed.
You know?
Now, I just want to agree with Bruce, he's explained it quite simply. Just getting this stuff wrapped up, too much stuff dragging on, you know?
Well, it puts her in a hell of a bind, just trying to do the job that we pay her to do, and she doesn't have all the figures. I mean, it's like, she might be good, but ESP is not her, we just say ESPN, maybe you can watch ESPN while you're with her.
Yeah, and interest adds up.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, that's why Trish and I talked about billing possibly this fall. I'd like to see it done.
Yeah. On this one in particular, that Bruce just discussed, which I agree a hundred percent, it's just completion. It's just wrapping stuff up, it's dragged on too long, for whatever reason, and a lot of times, it's piddled. But, very discouraging to people paying interest that want to pay the bill.
All right, we got nine twenty, and we will move on to DD one HK from Humble pursuit, accept the annexation report and set hearing date.
So this is the arson?
No, this is actually one by Laverne. This is one you didn't even know about.
It's always nice to have one we go to.
This was a, this was a petition signed several years ago, when we went through our list of projects that were not completed, this one came up. The map shows you where it is, it's not a very big area. You can see Laverne at the very top of the drawing. There was some tiling done years ago, this was never brought in, and this is bringing it in to the district and making it official. Not that many acres. Yes, yes, Cassuah is aware of it, I'm going to drop off a report on my way through there today. I think they got it on the agenda, because, uh, we'll look ahead at dates for... This one, we do need to set a date for a hearing, just to clean it up. And we, what we've done with this is, how we often do annexations, where they've been in here. And Mansky, I, I look back at my notes, or minutes from this, and the minutes say that Mansky did some tiling to bring this in, but it was never annexed or classified. So, we annex, we have acres to annex, and we have, um, how they, they should be assessed for units in HK one. So this will clean all that up.
This project, is it done?
Yeah, and it was all private. And it was all private? No, all private. This is all private. So this is just cleaning up something old on the books.
Just kinda get away from someone that, you know, normally would...
Yes, yes. Matter of fact, it was, we, we went through a list at work and prepared it and gave it to Trish and, and she wasn't aware of the project because it'd been so long ago. So it's just cleaning that up is what we're doing with this.
So they need to set a date for three days out?
Yes.
So where's that put?
July 17th is forty-two days. Isn't that what we looked at?
Do we need a motion to put it on as 17th of July?
Does that work, Trish?
Make a motion to, so what is it? Public annexation hearing?
Yeah.
Or DD number one?
And classification.
Classification.
Yeah. HK 1.
HK 1.
HK 1.
On Monday, July 17th.
I shoot nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Time?
Yeah, nine's a good time. Okay, we have that motion on the table.
Second.
Second by Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Shouldn't be much public, but it was private tile.
No. Yeah. Yeah. The date...
So what was missed here? I mean, obviously it wasn't a, a drainage district saying like he went in and built a new dredge dish or put in a new tile.
Right.
It was privately hooked onto the drainage district.
Yep.
In land that was not in the drainage district.
There's lots of that out there. There is. There's a lot of it out there.
I'm sure there is, but...
That's why we do the reclassification, so you catch those things. Yes.
Well, obviously, but then mistakes get made. You can't be on top of everything all the time.
I would say this was probably my doing. It was just, this is not affecting anybody. It's a small area.
Cleaning up's a bad thing.
There you go. That's what we're trying to do with everything here right now.
Well, I guess my, maybe my point is, is there a way to alleviate or hopefully avoid this?
Yep, and that's what we're doing with Trish and you guys is working on these, anything that's old out there.
Well, yeah, to get cleaned up, I understand all that, but in future, I don't know.
Make me, make me commit to a time. And I know there's things come up sometimes you can't always meet your schedule, but I will try to give you a, a time on anything here.
Okay.
This is long enough ago, I don't even remember this number, so I'm almost ten years...
Well, I guess I'd like to be more fair to the fact that it was somewhat unaware of all this stuff that it didn't get done.
It was forgotten for quite a while.
Well, let's not forget, but that was for sure.
Just like three years ago or so, we started making a list of active projects.
Did you check sheet or...
Yes, yes. And we picked up on it then, but we still didn't push it. So, um, and that's the list I gave Trish and I, we give her an update every once in a while. That's gonna help us tremendously.
That's great, we appreciate that.
And I think you'll, you've seen, anything recent, we've pushed and we've finished it. But we're dropping back to clean up some of these too.
Well, I mean, when was this tiling done even?
Uh, yeah, I don't know. And I don't know that there's any record of it because it was private and somebody brought it to the board's attention, joint board's attention.
Well, that's what I was getting at, was told. I mean, all the rest of this is good discussion, yes, to get it done, but...
Yeah.
Where if it's brought, if it, if it was brought to someone's attention, it just gotta, got...
Set aside.
Set off to the side. I know it wasn't a huge big deal, but yet it is, 'cause it needs to be done.
And that's where, we try and update our list every two or three months on status of where things are.
Yeah, 'cause if it's a known thing, even though it's a small, and it's a small annexation, don't let it all, 'cause eventually it's, here we are cleaning this up and we got other bigger things, so...
Yeah, that's like this annexation into two. I mean, we got that done in a couple of weeks.
That's what that...
And that's, that's what we're trying to do with all of this. Um, yeah.
Learning experience.
Exactly. Yes.
Like a positive stride.
Yes, and you guys are doing real well with keeping track of work order items and where they stand and who's working on them and...
Exactly.
Yeah, so we wanna be part of that. I mean, as far as...
Going in the right direction.
There you go. Exactly.
So we got that figured for that, right about on the 17th of July?
Yep. Yeah. And we had to vote, right?
Yeah.
I guess I'm a little foggy yet today. Shifting gears. Yeah.
Well, we got that done.
A little time to work.
Huge time to work. Okay, we are...
Still ahead of time.
Still a few minutes away from... Um...
Can you give us a background on this next go around here?
Uh, sub five of eleven, yes. Yeah, just give us a little history up there on this one. Um, a few years ago, there was a petition submitted. Um, there was a hearing held. A remonstrance was met. Um, this, I should give you this so you can look at where it is. This is, um, what was doing this? Dave? Yeah, yeah.
You have north and west of Ruben then?
Yes.
From my place, northwest.
A more recent petition was submitted. Um, thus this report. Oops.
Pretty sure I know what this is all about now.
You can see in the back, um, we've included a portion of the county map. Um, I like your new flat book, by the way, with this color in it. It just helps you pick out things. So that gives you the location. Dave is kinda describing it, uh, to you. Um, what we'll be doing is doing a review with you of this report shortly. Um, and then you'll, you'll set a hearing date for this one also. And Trish and I looked at 17th as a possibility on this one too. There will be opposition to it because it is a spendy project. Looking at bidding both plastic and concrete. Um...
Yeah, I was surprised the plastic coming higher.
Well, with the, with the...
That's not dual, that's not true plastic. That's polypropylene. This is something altogether new.
This is the double, the double thickness though?
This is a stiffer gray material.
The price product is brand new.
Probably the same.
Is it over price product?
Yeah, that's brand new.
Brand new stuff.
Yeah, and it's not worth it.
It's not worth it?
Yep. There's a chance of going dual wall, but we're gonna need to do a lot of bidding. I mean, there's just not much strength there. Um, and it, the problem is it can take twenty years for it to come down, but it, it's gonna, it's going to lose capacity. It almost guarantees it.
The depth is not very deep evidently?
Not too deep, no. Nope. Um, yeah. We can bid almost anything. There's some of it where we won't stand behind. Well, we got 9:30. We'll do DD 11, sub district five, except for preliminary engineering report. It's at a hearing date.
Let's just continue our discussion on that.
Yes.
And, uh, this is, no, I mean, actually, you see where it is. This is new construction.
Yes.
Is there any drainage in this project location right now?
Yes, there's an existing tile system there. It's just way undersized.
So is this, uh, well, I should reconsider.
This is a new...
It's a lot easier just to ask you.
Oh, do it. I can, sometimes in three minutes, we can cover what it is.
Well, are they gonna discontinue the existing one then?
The intent right now is to parallel the old one. We'll wanna, yeah, we'll wanna...
And then do cross pipes?
Yes, we'll wanna visit with Dave some more on that, on the condition of the existing. Um, sometimes it's, they're in bad enough shape, we just go right down the route of the old one. Um, this one, we're intending to run one parallel and then do cross connections. Use that one as long as we possibly can, uh, for capacity. And we did an annexation report a little while back. Yeah. A few more acres. Sure, but it's included is, will be in this? Yes, yes. Wasn't a lot of acres, but it, it is acres that will help contribute to this. Yes, that's all taken care of. Yep. Uh, and I'll tell you, there, there was somebody in this morning already objecting to this. Um, it'll, it'll be controversial, um, mostly because of the cost, but we feel strongly, even at this cost, that it's gonna pay for itself in not many years. Um, it just does. And that, and that's why I think you're seeing so much tiling going on. People are realizing what it does for them.
Absolutely.
Absolut, immediate increase in yield.
So this does not add any, well, length of the drainage?
No.
'Cause it, it's just paralleling from the start to finish, old system?
And, and you can kinda see on the map, we do get down into section seven, um, there a little bit to provide an outlet there. And the old tile does get there according to the map. Okay. Uh, one other question? Yep. See, you never did a half inch just because there was no request for it. Right. Correct.
Wasn't that, didn't you just tuck one inch, Dave?
Yeah.
From the start, that's what they...
Yeah. The consensus, if there, whatever there is consensus, goes one inch coefficient.
Mm-hmm.
Is it right, the difference in price on this project is not that much?
No.
Yeah.
For as many feet as are going.
Twenty or twenty-five percent more, you get a hundred percent more drainage. It's just...
So that was kind of, well, you just didn't have the fiddle of that.
Exactly. Exactly.
That's nice to know going ahead.
Yeah, it is. It is.
So I have a question. I, Trish had a issue over on the other side, we're out in the other direction. Where one of the tile isn't running and it's backing up into several people's land. But it, it's not coming out of the end, so we're questioning, why don't we put something like, uh, some observation points in there? So that we can pull the lid off and say, "Well, we got water running over here. We got water running at the beginning," or, you know? And I know farmers don't like farming around the...
Intakes.
Intakes or, but we go to the end of the pipe and we can't see that, and it's a thirty-six inch pipe.
Yeah.
And it's county tile and it's, so we're sitting there wondering, now we, uh, we gotta have some obstruction in there somewhere. So I guess my question, if we're gonna do some kind of...
Obstruction.
I know.
Are you proposing...
I don't know. I, I guess I'm just curious, you know? If you go out here, you can see water coming out of the end of the pipe, you know you got water flowing. But when it isn't coming out of the end of the pipe and you got water in the field that's backed up, somewhere there's some type of obstruction, but you don't have a, you're however many feet, you don't know where, where you start digging. You're not gonna knock a hole in a thirty-six inch pipe looking, you got water here?
You're proposing, if you're making a new project, to put in some observation points?
Here's a thought.
How we do that?
Here's a thought. We could have them put in a factory tee with the piece standing upright. We can bring that to the surface. We could do it in the road ditches, not interfering with farming. We could do it in fence lines, not interfering with farming.
I wondered if we had the ability to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Would that work? Something like that, Dave, or would that be more of a pain? Farming?
Well, I guess what I would tell you is you gotta be really careful when you stick something out of the ground.
Exactly.
They're gonna hook it.
It's just like, and boy, you start messing with thirty-six inch tile. Then you get... It can really suck.
It's a mess. Exactly.
Yeah, but the problem is, some of these damn trees grow up in these fence rows and one little tree will just plug any kind of tile.
Yeah. They don't make a very big tree.
No, it doesn't. You're right.
Over by, uh, Melissa's, Gary and in between Garry's and Kevin Goodell's and...
Is that thirty-eight?
And it winds off to the northwest and it goes towards the highway, so...
Oh.
So it's thirty-six A.
Hmm. Well, yeah, those, we can do those kinds of things with tees and if, that would help as far as sucking dirt because you, you'd have factory connections.
Even if you had them located in GPS marks, you could go out there with a little backhoe and dig up and just take the cap off and look down.
Yeah, yeah.
If they're buried two feet deep or something, you know?
Well, I guess my question is, you spend what, the number there and not be able to back up onto the, and, you know, in twenty years, well, whoever's, whatever, you look at it and say, "We don't have water coming out the end." And then start going backwards and see where we got water, if there is water in there.
Because like I say, when you dig up a thirty-six inch, you hate cutting holes.
Yeah, you're not gonna cut a hole in it and say, "Well, we..."
Well, we got water here, don't we, here?
We have GPS locations for the junction boxes out in fields, but they're down two feet or two and a half feet. So you'd have to have a small backhoe or something out there to get to those.
That's a better option though.
I, I...
Because you know where it is and it is something, it is a junction box.
Yeah.
It's not something you're gonna destroy every time you go past it.
Right.
'Cause they always, they have manhole covers on them?
Yes. Yes.
So they could dig it up if you're a little ambitious with the speed.
Yeah.
And look, look, there's not too many people like that.
They're not that ambitious. They will get back up. The prob, you know, and this is good idea and obviously, yes, we do, you designed these for a hundred plus years.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Long, long time. So, yeah, you can say it, it is a good idea because it is down the road. Uh, part of the problem is with these things that you get complaints on, it's, "Oh, it's not running out here, it's running here, it's not running here." These are a hundred year old systems.
Right.
We are gonna have to dig them up and you're not gonna go and, you know, the chances are that's gonna be replaced versus fixed. So you're, you know, I guess you're looking at past history, trying to remedy it. I guess we're applicable, a junction box or an inspection box or something.
Yeah.
Is a thought as it's being designed.
I'm not trying to add to the cause.
You can't get too overly carried away.
Yeah.
If you had something every half mile even or something.
Well, sometimes it gets so long, you don't have anywhere to know even if it's coming out at the end or if it's going in at the beginning.
Example on this, what, what is the distance? I'm just asking, so I don't have to dig through here.
Well, it's, hmm, let's see.
I've seen that somewhere.
It's, uh, over two miles.
That was your saying.
Well, it was like nine thousand and some feet, I thought. Well, on Bruce's spot, this probably led itself to a couple of inspections.
Mm-hmm.
Forty-four hundred fifteen linear feet, the old one.
Oh, okay.
Fourteen eight, sixteen thousand, or sixteen hundred feet of fifteen, eighteen hundred feet of sixteen, twenty-two hundred feet of eighteen, thirteen hundred feet of twenties. Yeah, it's a long...
I'd like to think we're talking about something that no one would ever unearth or look in for seventy-five years after...
You're talking over thirteen thousand feet here, so...
So, yeah, it makes sense to think about that.
A long time, so...
Makes sense to think about that every so often. I don't know, you're, and in a reasonable location. Well, Dave, I don't think any bus will be around when somebody digs them up and looks at them. And not if it's built properly. We don't, it'll, it'll work in our lifetime and probably our kids' and maybe grandkids'. But like we keep running into, you know, we all got examples. If we don't have any drainage, there's stuff that is that hundred plus year old and it's not working very good. And it's hard to figure out why in a lot of these places. So we're doing this for three generations down the road to take a peek in there, see what's going on.
Well, I make much make the preliminary engineers report.
I'm talking about...[1682.41] I'm talking about...
You wanna set the same date?
That'd be great. That's, yeah.
That was your target. So the seventeenth was our target?
Yeah, and that, that first one won't take very long.
No.
So let's set it up for, like, nine-ten, or, should be plenty of time.
I think so. It's gonna be...
Maybe nine-oh-five.
Yeah.
Let's set it nine for nine-oh-five.
DD eleven eleven?
DD eleven sub five.
Fair enough.
At nine-ten was your time?
Nine-oh-five.
Nine-oh-five, he is really pushing.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Bruce, is it, or it's from Eric?
Yep.
From Bruce, to set the date for July seventeenth at nine-oh-five for DD eleven, sub district five.
Second that.
Second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
What was the inappropriate plastic pipe you were talking about?
Polypropylene.
This is not dual-wall pipe. This is propylene, polypropylene, and it's something new, and it's really high-priced stuff.
And it comes in twenty-foot sections, right?
I don't know. It's just like a Schedule forty PVC is what it is. It's way overpriced for what it is.
It's still got corrugations, and it's still got a smooth inside and a corrugated outside, but it is a little stiffer pipe. Doesn't take as much bedding as the dual-wall, but...
And, you know, over Eagle Grove, they had a pretty good area over there that they had with that stuff in, and all of a sudden, there isn't as much sitting over there, so I don't know if they used or...
Probably, we did a couple of projects with polypropylene last year.
That's what I wondered, did they...
Yeah, we did a couple of them with this polypropylene last year.
Did you even go with that in the concrete, or...
Depends on the bidders so much, and how they handle the rock bedding.
Apparently not.
No, I can't, they basically, you just will say they were even in my estimates in here.
Yeah, there was not much difference.
If they're even, why not go with the concrete?
Yeah.
This particular example, I think it's a concrete pipe project.
I, you know, we, we could go dual-wall with rock bedding, and it saves some, no argument, but I just...
You're not comfortable.
I'm not comfortable with that being a hundred-year system, I guess. There's just been a lot of research with the fatigue on plastic. Like I say, you can, you can make it work. We did two of them last year.
I heard some people tell you whether it's good.
I know. That's, yeah. I don't want my descendants or the future owners of the company...
Again, ask you, it's a quick question. Don't get real particular about depth overall across this. I mean, not, does it get deep and...
No, I don't think, there's hardly anything that's real deep.
There's one right south of the gravel road on the north side of this, it's gonna be twenty, twenty feet, twenty-five feet deep digging, and that's gotta be concrete there, no matter what you do.
Yeah.
Not a lot of depth. No. For a project like... It's broke out there right now, and they're fixing it, and it's only four, four and a half feet deep to the top of it. Well, that also... The old one's broke. That also lends itself to concrete, know that that works.
Here's one thing I think about with these, if we bid both, I think it's gonna help the price of both of them.
Yeah. To get more bidders.
Yeah, more bidders, help the price of both, not make a decision until we have actual prices. I, I see the plastic people coming in and trying to hit this really hard.
If they're gonna be the same cost as concrete, they're not gonna get a lot of business.
Right, and that's where I think they're gonna look real hard at this one, try and come up with a good price.
My concrete people come down a little bit.
Exactly.
Well, that's, I think it's well and fine, you know, we'll see what, because this is all familiar, it's not hard to...
That's right. Oh, yeah, we, yeah, that's right.
Let's move on, because we had a teleconference with, uh...
There you are.
Already here?
Appreciate it, sir.
Okay, we got BD number five, one-oh-two, Humboldt Webster, joint district claim, proof claim for repairs, what that is, what we're gonna talk about.
The agenda, the bill, and the request form.
Need up to...
We got a bill for about nine thousand six hundred seventeen dollars. That's just, is that Humboldt's portion of, that's just the whole repair.
That's it. It was requested by Larry Minnigan.
Thank you, David. Thanks, Paul. See ya.
November of eighteen, they did the request for repairs, and repairs were done this spring, May twen, well, May twentieth. When it was filled out. Okay, well, get them on the phone.
Are they control county?
Uh, we are.
We are.
Says H is first, so... Maybe it's alphabetical.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, it's Rick Peterson. We have a full board here, and Rick Hopper's here also, and Trish. So we are in drainage. Are we the lead county, or are you?
Yeah, we are.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we're the lead county, because we have a full board here, we have a grant board, Chris is there, and we have our honors, the leading planner. Uh, first of all, we have the chair, but I don't want you to get up.
I'll second, oh, Rick Peterson, I'll second that motion.
All right.
Anything for Dinko.
Here it is. All right, you're in here. I'll call me to order, and we need to discuss the repair that was done on the drainage part. I'll play this. There was a big, there was a big hole out in the field. We've had some trouble with it before, a couple times already. And the guy went up and fixed it. He had to go further back, and he found the pipe, it's a decent towel with a button. And he found a hole up on the bank that he had to fix, but it wasn't that well, so it turned into a bigger, bigger shovel that he thought it was fixing. I went up and looked at it, and it was, it needed fixed.
Gary? Yeah, how's it? Uh, it's Rick Peterson. I was just looking through the hourly rates. They all look reasonable. And then we have the materials cost of four thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, ninety-one cents. I don't think we have any issues on our end.
Was there any other, you can use on the project?
Well, at the joint district like this, you can't be over, I think we had a five thousand dollar limit, although it had to be a special board.
Okay. Okay, so I guess I need a motion to approve the bill.
All right, uh, this is Rick Peterson. I'll make the motion to approve the payment of nine thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-one cents to, um, Christian Denclaw, Denclaw Services.
Do you have a second? Okay, I'll say, check it, all right, Peter.
Aye.
Close. Motion, Jerry, you ready to go on, I don't know yet?
None.
Are you in the meeting now?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Well, I think I'll let you go there. Have a good day, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Keith.
Yeah, catch you later.
Bye.
Keith fed me candy, though. Found your favorite candy. How'd you yell at him? Bring him more candy.
All right.
Just so you guys know, before you go out of drainage, contractor Rick Peterson is hoping to start on three dash forty-seven cleanout today.
Oh, today?
We met with him last week, as far as getting started. So I think his son Travis is gonna be the operator most of the time, from what we understand, so...
That is, where?
Just south of Rennwick.
There you go.
South of Rennwick.
It goes from Wright County into about two and a half miles into Humboldt.
Yes. Starts just in Wright.
Is this the one that had a concern of there's some sloughing off?
No.
I take it not that's...
No, that's a different one.
I think that's four, I believe.
Yeah, that's four.
So this is not anything too complicated?
No, just a nice little dip.
It's really deep where you start.
Yeah, it's really deep.
I think it, they had needed to have like a sixty-two foot reach in order to get there.
And I think you have to go from both sides possibly.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
But this starts in Wright County?
Just barely.
Barely starts?
Barely, and, yeah. Probably ninety-five percent of the area is, or more, is in Humboldt County, yeah, so... But that, that will be starting.
Well, that's, it could be real big.
We're gonna monitor it regularly, especially to start with, be sure the depths are right, the bottom widths are okay. We don't want them cutting anything straight up and down. We've got into a lot of trouble with that. Just something for you guys to be aware of, Peterson Excavating has looked at a hydrocedar, I believe they're gonna buy it, and we're encouraging it because they're exactly the kind of people we need to be involved in hydroceding ditches because they do ditches. Cedars don't do ditches, and they don't wanna drive in that sloppy spoil, and...
So is that, like, on a bucket somehow, or, I mean, what is the hydro...
No, it, it's, I believe it's just gonna be a trailer they pull, behind something.
And they just walk behind it?
They walk behind it with a hose.
Oh, I see.
And it blows up. Water, and...
Water, like...
Yeah, yeah, I should've.
Go right into the bank.
Yeah. Yeah. We've, we've been trying to come up with a way to get hydroceding done on ditches, and every time the contractors complain, how do we pull, how do we get a machine along the ditch when you got the sloppy spoil right there? Well, Peterson's are looking at coming up with a way, and we...
Good for them.
Yes, and we told them, if they can do this, we're gonna pass their name on to anybody who's doing a ditch for us, and...
They could maybe open up their own subdivision.
Absolutely. I think there's room for it. Absolutely. They'd be traveling all over.
Okay. Are we, got anything else for drainage?
Well, I have a...
Well, go ahead.
I have the question on this thirty-six A out here, when she contacted me, two weeks ago, when I was on my way to Spencer. We've had that complaint, that this thirty-six A, which, for you, you know where Harold and Gary Nellis live? Right out on Highway Three?
Yeah.
Well, it cuts across the backside of Gary's, and then it runs over towards the west, or actually, the southeast, and then it comes out back towards the river. Well, somewhere in there, there, it's blocked, because there's a pond sitting behind Gary's house. And then when it comes across the road to the west by Kevin Goodell's, it goes out across his field, then it splits. Goes off to Gary Nave to the southwest, and then it goes off towards the north, towards Gary Vincent's. Tile up in there, there's no water standing, but there's some low spots in there where, if it's on the surface, it will run. So Kevin said, well, there's a lot of, there isn't much water sitting on the surface, so he thinks it's draining, but it's not coming out the end, because it actually comes out of the end of the, behind Nellis's there, there's some old grass waterway. So, basically, I talked to Dean, I talked with, he talked with John Beatty. We have the ability to go in there, and...
This is the right way.
...our right way, and yesterday, they were gonna run a drone over it, just fly the drone so they could run it so quick and see. But Gary says there's no obstruction that he knows of. But Gary Nave has over a thousand acres that is, is not draining. So somewhere, there's gotta be some obstruction in there that, so what do we gotta, what's our best? And I didn't wanna call you in London while you were...
Well, to me, rather than break holes in a thirty-six, I would think they would have a drill, you could just drill a hole and do an inspection.
Or drill it?
Or drill it, and then put a plug in it.
Well, right behind Gary's, there's some willows.
Oh, boy.
And those willows are the ones, it, I don't know how close, I tried to talk with Lloyd Goodell, 'cause he remembers when the tile went in through, but, you know, his vision and whatnot, he says, he can't really... He said, I can tell you where it's at, but I can't. So, I guess, we just need some direction to try to... I could go out and walk around for days and not know where I'm at, if someone knew how and what.
Where it works out.
Supposedly, it's thirty-six inch, I think he said it's a thirty-six.
Yeah, but that probably be clay, thirty-six inch clay.
It's possible. They did. Yeah.
Wow. I don't know. I'm just...
Well, wouldn't the, Rick's thought, I mean, if thirty-six says something, so you really don't wanna tear it up, but you do wanna inspect it, is there a means of...
Yeah.
Going down that to just see?
And I'm not sure how that core would work if you can get it to stay in the bit you're using.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would hope so.
Well, I think the best thing to be do is to go out behind Nellis's, find the location where it's coming out, and let's view the end of it.
Check the end.
And see, because if Gary Naves and Rod have a thousand acres that drain into the Y...
I mean, there's...
Somewhere, there's gotta be, and if Gary's got water that's still, his ground is still wet, is wet, he said, and it can't flow, then there's something that's obstructed.
Yeah.
So we gotta figure out where, between what point and the end, if there's no obstruction at the end, then we gotta have something in the middle.
Yeah, and you could use a pretty, fairly small hole, maybe the size of those plastic plugs they use in concrete, because all you're named to see.
There's about a three-inch hole.
Yeah. Is there, is there water in there? You could do that with just dipping something in it.
Put a stick in there and see how much water's in it.
Yeah.
Depending on how deep, and how big the pipe is, we could...
Who does such a thing?
Who's small, who's small and could scurry up a tile?
What, who, do they have a system that can bore that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you can, they got bits that bore concrete.
Having contractors, like asphalt in particular, they have to have cores, to take cores of the roads to verify the thickness.
Especially where Cameron come in handy?
The problem is getting access. Camera's a great idea, but it's limited to how far you can go, and you need access points.
According to the guy that was gonna come for Gary Naves, they only have so much water in it.
Yeah, too much, you can't see anymore.
He wanna put his pipe in it, and when it's full bore, and he loses his five thousand dollar camera.
There you go. Yeah.
So, kind of thing if you do it.
There you go. This core idea, I think, is a, is a good idea. Good start.
Well, I think we go to the willows, go to the end and check and see.
Yeah, check the end first, and go to where the willows are.
Then go to the willows and see how close you are to being able to probe it, find out, you know. So I'll just work with Gary, and then let's see, you know, there's some issues we have to get through.
Mm-hmm.
We'll just leave it at that.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to bring that up, much of...
With the coring, one really good thing about that too is you just get, need to get to the top of the pipe.
Yeah, just to find the top of the pipe.
Get a big enough spot to drill it. Yeah.
And bore a hole, take a flashlight in here, and check, and see how much water you got. Or if it's culling.
Yeah, you're not destroying anything.
You have to get a backhoe out here and dig a hole down to the tile.
Yeah.
Probably cropped there now, too.
No, but most of where it comes across Gary's, there's grass waterway, grass strip, so we're, we're better suited to be able to find, locate, and...
Oh, yeah.
So...
Find somebody that's good at witching, too.
Well...
It works. I'm...
Other quick thing, Rick, on drainage, uh...
So that'd be a short order, we can put together probably.
The contractors, they have a new, uh, you know, some, similar to piling, but their, their depth.
Very little control. That's where...
I mean, we had some discussion, where they said they seem to be getting some higher-tech equipment. Are they able to keep their elevation proper? Do they have a means of...
We only know of one that's equipped with lasers on their arm. That's why we're checking them most of these daily.
Right.
Good operator can tell by water level and be really close. And we at, we request at least a six, four-inch overdig to help the initial sanitation, and that's in our favor. And we recommend a six-inch overdig for initial sanitation.
You have to be very careful, you don't get too much overdig.
Exactly, and we had one of those here in Emmett, here in...
I guess my question, there is technology out there, but most of them don't have it.
That's right. That's right. Exactly.
Physical, visual, and then obviously, you guys check it.
Yes. We give them stakes to check into, and, yeah, and then when we're here, they, they'll either lower us down in the bucket or we'll scurry down the ditch.
A lot of them are not, it's not quite up to the speed of technology with the pipe.
The contractor that we know, out of Esterville, was looking at two different systems, and we're hoping he gets that all ironed out so we can promote it with other contractors.
So that would help a lot.
Oh, it'd help a lot. You'd settle on engineering, for one thing.
Yeah, motion going to drainage.
So, move.
Second.
Got it for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we take a short recess?
Engineers walking up the stairs, so...
Okay.
Why?
Said the engineer's walking in.
We're gonna take a short recess.
Do you mind a short recess? We're ready for...
You can't get out of here until I talk to you.
Yeah.
You want my advice on something? Good Lord.
What's he selling?
Always getting hit. Always getting hit.